I'm very proud because before I started this job right here, I was homeless. I used to sleep under the bridge and most of the streets that I'm cleaning up now, that's the streets I used to sleep on. I'm thankful that they gave me opportunity. You know, it's changed my life tremendously. Like I said, I was homeless. You know, now I'm in the process of looking for a house to buy. Through this program, you know, I came with my addiction. Man, I'm so thankful. You know, I thank the staff at Good Souls for giving me the opportunity, man. They helped me out tremendously. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the Good Souls staff and the city of Orlando. The most rewarding part of this job is getting up every day and trying to keep Orlando beautiful. You know, doing my part and making sure the community and residents are happy with their areas are getting cleaned up, the streets are getting cleaned up.
Have you seen the fountain at Lake Eola? It's huge! Check out this lady's head! It's huge! Lake Eola swan boats are incredible. They're huge! Did you know there's almost a mile of walkway around Lake Eola? It's huge! Have you seen the feet on this guy? They're huge! Did you know that a swan's bill is larger than a duck's bill? That's huge! Have you seen the trees at Lake Eola? They're huge! Lake Eola ban shell, it's huge! Visit Lake Eola. It's huge! Have you seen the head on this guy? It's...little. It's not really that big. Let's see. What? Oh, no! Flushful wipes! Trash it. Don't splash it.
So we are really focused on affordable housing in Orlando and Central Florida. And I think I could probably call it now our biggest and most crucial and most vexing issue. But we're committed to ensuring that every person, regardless of economic status, should have access to safe and affordable housing. Some of the units here will be held for those who have experienced homelessness and a certain percentage is set aside for that. And we have committed as a community to permanent supportive housing.
I've been waiting for this for weeks. I gotta tell you, I am so ready to do this. I even have the bed ready. So when you get home, we can get really dirty. Hey! Here you go. With all this compost, we're gonna have the best plants in the neighborhood.
Hello, I'm Corporal Kevlon Kirkpatrick. I'd like to go over one of the free services we provide at the Orlando Police Department, a residential security survey. Since we cannot be everywhere all the time, I'm gonna provide you with an abundance of options to consider to better safeguard your home. One of the first challenges we see are address numbers. Address numbers should be visible from the street. Bushes and/or shrubs should be no higher than two feet. This fence, although provides lots of natural visibility, it would be better aided by shrubs being lower than the fence, again, two feet in height. All fences and/or gates should be locked. Detached buildings and/or garages should be locked and secured. One of the most common ways burglaries are committed are through the front door. Front door damage and/or kick-in is one of the common ways that these residential burglaries are committed. One of the options to consider is replacing these screws in the strike plate with two-to-three inch screws. The other thing is making sure your bolt or your throw is at least one inch in length. As you see, this front door has a very large glass portion. One option to consider in reference to securing this and making this more challenging for bad guys to get in is shadow-proof material over this glass portion. So, we provided you with some helpful hints. If you'd like a more comprehensive residential security survey, please feel free to contact Also, consider starting and maintaining an active neighborhood watch group.
All right, good morning. Welcome to the August 20th workshop of the Orlando City Council. Commissioners, today we're gonna get an update from Lynx, one of our great transportation partners that obviously operates the limo system for us as well as the regional transit system. Edward Johnson, their CEO, is here all decked out in festive pink. So, welcome Edward.
Thank you so very much, Mayor. And good morning to everyone. Thank you so very much for allowing me to come speak before you this morning. We've had talked several months to a year ago about Lynx coming before you to give an update on a regular basis. And one of our goals were to provide an update after our calendar year 2007 activities. But we recognized that with all the construction that you had going on, we had to push it out. So, some of this information might be a little dated, but we still wanted to offer the same information that we provided to other governments that fund Lynx. But first and foremost, before I get into the presentation, I wanted to let you know that our team has adopted the mantra of no longer being just simply a bus company, but rather we want to be mobility managers. And what that means is that we're looking for the right solution to deliver and to meet the needs of our customers. Not just simply putting a 60-foot or a 40-foot bus out there, but using different technologies to address the mobility needs. So when I came before you a little bit over a year ago, shared with you that we wanted to focus on about five key areas. One was enhance communications, improve our efficiency, establish more partnerships, improve customer confidence in the system, but also to increase our brand recognition and community involvement. So as we talk about enhancing our communications, we recognized that we needed to have more communications with our internal employees, our ambassadors. We have over 700 bus operators who are out in the service area each and every day representing the agency and this community. So, we want them to better understand what's going on within the organization. But also, we need to be out in the community telling the Lynx story. Oftentimes, the story is told by others and we needed to make sure that we had a presence out in the community. So, what we've been doing is making sure that we're sitting on panels, having these discussions to talk about the things that Lynx is working on and the accomplishments that we're making, and also making sure that we're giving good information to our media. So as we talk about improving our efficiencies, the key to all of this was making sure that everyone within our organization went back to the fundamentals so that we understood more about our business. So, what I constantly say to our employees, let's know the business, and let's know the numbers, and let's know what those numbers mean. That gives us a better appreciation on how we need to adjust our services to ultimately be more cost-efficient, but also to make sure that we're adjusting to meet the needs of our community. Now, an area that we focused our initial attention on was our paratransit program. As you know, that is services for people with disabilities, our most vulnerable members of our community. What we said that we would restructure how we manage and conduct those services. So, we brought some of the functions that was turnkey operations, we brought some of those functions in-house and provided a direct oversight. Also, we brought in TNCs and taxi cabs to deliver some of the services that would have normally been placed on a paratransit vehicle that would transport up to 12 people. So, our customers who do not need a wheelchair-equipped vehicle and who can transfer into a sedan vehicle, we're using those smaller vehicles to deliver those services. And what that does for us is take some of the hardship off of those vehicles that's really meeting the needs of customers who need a lot of assistance. And since we have rolled out this new way of delivering services, and we started this in December 2017, we've seen a reduction in our costs by $2 million just from a contract standpoint. Also, we saw a cost avoidance. So rather than paying about $41 per trip for 20% of our services, where now it's costing us roughly between $15 and $20 per trip using the TNCs and taxi cabs. So that gives us additional resources to meet the growing demand of our paratransit services. When I first came on board, we were doing roughly about 1,100 trips per day. Now, we're well over 1,500 trips and some days it's peaking up to 2,000 trips per day. Also, we've seen that our on-time performance has jumped from 80% to 92 and 93% on a consistent basis. So as we looked at how can we deliver our services differently on paratransit, we're currently doing the same thing on our fixed route system. Now, we have titled this as our Lynx Forward program. We are reimagining what our fixed route services should look like. And as you can see on the diagram on this picture here, it shows that we wanna put more of our services along the major thoroughfares. What we wanna do is get this service along those thoroughfares at 15-minute frequencies. And what we're trying to do is do this with the resources that we have. Now, rather than our buses going off of these major thoroughfares, we would like to use smaller vehicles as what we would call in the transit industry, micro-transit. It may be a van, or it may even be a sedan, going through the neighborhoods and then feeding those services back into the major thoroughfares. This helps to reduce costs as well as helps us to move our passengers a lot faster to their destination. Also, some other things that we've done as far as from an efficiency standpoint, you know, those big buses sometimes come in contact with tree branches, traffic signs, and those mirrors get knocked off. And a mirror costs roughly about $600 apiece. Our team went back and looked at, well, maybe we don't have to just replace the mirror. Maybe we can do a refurbishing of that mirror and then put it back onto the vehicle. So we started that process and the refurb program only costs about $150 per vehicle versus the $600 some odd dollars per vehicle. So we're saving a lot of money. We generally go through about 1,000 mirrors per year. Also, we changed our investment strategy for the agency. Typically, we were generating about $20,000 in investment income. Since we changed our strategy for fiscal year 2017, we generated over $200,000. Now, the slides suggest that we're gonna get roughly $400,000, but as it stands right now, we're tracking to be well over $500,000. One of the things I say to any and everybody who would listen to me is that Lynx cannot be successful on its own. It requires partnerships. It requires the partnerships like what we have here with the city of Orlando. But we have to have partnerships throughout the community. So when I first came back, I immediately went out to the University of Central Florida, Valencia College, as well as Seminole State College, and talked to them about how can we get their students to utilize our services more? And if we can start there, then they can hopefully pass on the benefits of using transit onto their children. Also, we hope that the university and college would identify that this could potentially be a cost-saving measure for them, which each of them did recognize. So if we can get more of their students as well as their faculty to use transit, then that's less parking that they have to build out and maintain. And as I mentioned about the wonderful partnership that we have with the city of Orlando, certainly would like to recognize Billy Haddaway, Ms. Claudia Kay, F.J. Flynn, Chris Castro. We work with them day in and day out, and they provide an awesome set of resources for us. And so, one huge project that we've been focusing on is developing our concept of operations for autonomous vehicle operation along the limo lane. And we believe this is gonna be a very successful project and that those team members have represented you all so very, very well. Also, most people think of Lynx as purely just to get people to work and get them to doctors' offices and things of that nature, but at times of emergency, that's when we provide additional resource to our community. As you know, OUC brings in linemen from around the country to assist when we have hurricanes. And so, this year, we were able to support OUC in moving those linemen around to get to their trucks and back to their hotels day in and day out, as well as providing support to the Orlando Airport. The Orlando Airport did, or MCO, was threatening to not have enough fuel to continue to operate its buses. And we worked up an agreement saying that you can come and fill your buses up at our facility so they can maintain their operations. So when we talk about improving the customer's confidence in our system, the way that we felt that we could best achieve this was by implementing technology into our services. I know that technology is very important for Mayor Dyer, and so we jumped right onto that. So when I talked to our staff about placing Wi-Fi on all of our buses, I said, "We're gonna do this in 90 days." They said, "Well, we can't do that. It takes a lot longer than that." And I said, "You can do it." And we put ourselves up to the challenge. And they got all Wi-Fi on all of our buses within that 90-day period. And then we went on to develop four mobile applications. Bus Tracker, something that was very needed by our customers. Also, our mobile fare payment application. Also, then we have a demand-response neighbor link system that works very similar to Uber and Lyft. And then lastly, we put in our See and Say app, and this application allows you to send notification back to our 24-hour service security office if there is some type of disturbance that's going on our vehicle. You can send a quick picture or a two-to-three second video and we can dispatch, excuse me, local law enforcement services out to address the issue. Also, we ask our customers to let us know if they see things such as dirty bus stops or issues with on-time performance. So as far as our brand recognition and community involvement, we have made it a requirement that all of our managers and above sit on community boards. We want our staff to be a part of the community, not just merely exist in the community. So we say that our chiefs will have to sit on at least two boards. One board can be more of an administrative in nature, but our one board has to be a human service organization, such as the organization that Commissioner Stewart represents, because we wanna make sure that we're in touch with those agencies whose... we want to make sure that we're in touch with those agencies whose client base depend on public transit. And that way, we can share real-time information with them, as well as help to dispel some myths about what Lynx is and what it is not. So those were the things that we accomplished in 2017. Just to go over a quick review of some things that we've done in 2018. So when we talk about those technology advancements that we've made, Lynx has received a number of awards, including from the Orlando Business Journal, as well as AT&amp;T. Our bus operator in that far-right-hand corner, Ms. Muriel, excuse me, Melinda Durell, she won Bus Operator of the Year here in the state of Florida. And the picture next to it, our bus operator as well as maintenance team competes against other bus operators and maintenance teams around the state. And we consistently win the grand champion award, means that we're the number-one entity in the state of Florida. And then those competitors go and compete on the international level. Also, Lynx received the Golden Brick Award for the line-line construction. And then lastly, the last thing I will point out, this year, we had the inaugural softball competition. That was competition between the city of Orlando, Orange County government, Seminole County government, the Florida Department of Transportation, and Lynx. I am pleased to announce to this body that the city of Orlando did win that competition. Lynx came in a little lower to the other end of the winning structure. We want to do this on an annual basis. We got a lot of positive comments about doing this by bringing all of these organizations together in a friendly way outside of just doing the day-to-day work. And some of the recommendations were that maybe we should do this twice a year rather than just doing it once a year. So a few things that we're going to be working on for 2019, we'll be looking to construct the new Pine Hills Superstop, as well as constructing our Lynx Operations Center expansion. We currently pay about $250,000 per year for a lease to operate our paratransit program. The Lynx Board authorized us to purchase land right behind our LOC facility. This will allow us to construct a new parking facility, and which will help us to eliminate that $200,000 annual operating expense. Also, we'll be looking to design a new southern operations facility in southern Orange or northern Osceola County, and we will be looking to roll out our new restructuring under our Lynx Forward Program for our fixed route services. And we want to continue to modify our mobility management in our paratransit area as well. So, this year marks the 25th anniversary for Lynx, you know, doing business as Lynx, and we have a quick video.
Over these 21 years, I can see I've met a lot of people. I still run into some in the streets, in the store, and they'll say, "Hey, bus driver, how you doing?" "I'm doing just fine, thank you." So I've enjoyed my years here at Lynx.
I enjoy working at Lynx basically because I like driving. I love it. I love driving. I like to be outdoors.
I love people. I'm a people person. I like to talk to people. And we're not just bus drivers here. We're confidants. We're friends.
We're basically part of their lives, too. They rely on us. We rely on them because it's our job, and I think we have a great partnership like that.
We're a big family here, and we do a lot for the public.
Central Florida very much relies on Lynx. It truly is the heartbeat of the city. People need other forms of transportation, whether they're able to drive or unable to drive. They have places they need to go, and Lynx provides that for them.
Lynx is an economic engine for the community. Without Lynx, we could not provide the vital services to the community. It helps the community thrive, and that's why I'm proud to be a Lynx operator.
Happy birthday, Lynx. I hope you'll be around for 100 more.
Happy birthday, Lynx, for 25 years of service.
Happy 25th birthday, Lynx.
Happy birthday, Lynx. You don't look a day over 21.
Happy 25th birthday, Lynx.
Happy birthday, Lynx. 25 has never looked so good.
Well, Mayor Dyer, thank you so very much for allowing me to present this information to you. There was a couple of things that I did fail to mention, and that is the partnership with Chris Castro and the rest of the team, along with the Orlando Utilities Commission. We've been working very diligently to identify an electric bus that we could put on the downtown limo. We did apply for a grant to purchase at least one, but the grant is asking for eight new buses for the electric vehicle, as well as we've been working very closely together with your team on the State Road 436, dedicated lane bus operations. So, Mayor.
Thank you, Edward. Good presentation, and I appreciate the fact that Lynx continues to be forward-thinking and open to some of the new innovative things that we're looking at. Questions or comments? Commissioner Stewart.
Edward, thank you very much. I appreciate all the work that you do, and your work in Dill Jalete helped us try to renovate the Rosemont Superstop, and I appreciate that. And so thank you to you and your staff, especially what you've done. One of the things I want to tell you how much I appreciate is the ability to get tickets from you for social service agencies. I'd love to see if we can figure out how to go find some grant money to make that a little bit cheaper for us.
Yes, sir.
So help me do that.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have been diligent in helping us to provide transportation for those trying to get to a job or get to a job interview, and I know that happens among the downtown core a lot.
Yes, sir.
How much I appreciate that. Last is, tell me how the electronics are working. I know that we're moving forward with the app and the PAUL Pass and those kind of things. How is that working? Is that working well? Are you having some challenges?
All of the mobile applications are working really well. We feel that we need to do more communications to get more of our customers to utilize it. We have seen a reduction in our cash-paying customers now that we've had the new application, so much so that we were able to reduce our money counting room by one staff member. So that's a good thing. We think that if we can get more on there, we may be able to reduce that a little bit further. As far as the bus tracker is concerned, we're getting a lot of positive comments from our customers, so we believe that that is going along very well. We are currently operating that system off of two different CAD systems, so we're looking to operate that off of just one, so we have some equipment that we need to introduce into the system. But then we believe that even more productivity will come out of it because people will see that bus refresh take place a lot faster than what is taking place right now.
Are your buses set up for Wi-Fi or just the downtown core?
No, all 313 buses have Wi-Fi.
Go back 25 years, and you would not see many of our customers even considering a phone. And now, almost all of them have some type of communication device, so that's really important, and I appreciate. I know that they have a cash challenge because they may not have access to credit cards to be able to do the payment. But that access to find out where the bus is and that kind of routing is really important. Thank you for what you do. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And one last question, I apologize. You're doing 2,000 calls a day for people?
Nearly 2,000 trips.
Trips?
Yes, sir. The calls are roughly about, just for the paratransit side, it's anywhere about 3,000 or more. Generally, when we get a request for a trip for the day before, about 20% of those do not actually go forward with their trip. They either call us to cancel the trip, so that's the reason why we end up doing a little bit more.
How is that funded? Is there a special grant for paratransit? Is that, I mean, how is it funded?
Well, the federal government says that it provides you with federal funding on an annual basis. It's left up to the local community to decide on how it wants to spend that money for transportation. However, you are required to provide transportation for persons with disabilities. The state, excuse me, the federal government says that you have to provide paratransit service within three-quarters of a mile of a fixed route and only operate that service when the fixed route is running. The Central Florida community operates slightly different than that. We operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, throughout our entire service area. So we go down to Halla Paul and bring people into the downtown area or take them out into the Apopka area. So we far exceed what the minimum federal requirements are. We do receive some funding from the state DOT through their, I'm sorry, I can't think of the name of the state agency at this point, our local coordinating board that also feeds through the Metropolitan Orlando. We get roughly about $5 million a year from them for that service.
Let me tell you how much I appreciate that, because one of the challenges that we have had in the past is that particular portion of the people that we deal with in terms of disability. And I can't remember the last time I got a complaint. So you guys are doing a great job in terms of responding, at least, which is what everybody wants, is just tell me when you're going to be here, and I'll be okay, as opposed to running late and running the risk of those who may have doctor's appointments or other transit. But I tell you how much I appreciate that, because it's been a real help to us in terms of providing services.
Well, thank you very much, sir. Also, we will be rolling out our mobile app for our paratransit program.
Oh, cool.
Later this year, and we will give the customer's caregiver the ability to watch the vehicle as it's arriving, to pick up their family member, as well as watch that vehicle as it's going to its destination. That gives the family member that much more comfort when their family member is using the service.
Let's go ahead and just imagine 2,000 trips a day just in that area, which is throughout the entire, you know, three-county area. That's incredible. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Sheen?
Edward, one of the challenges we have in placing bus stops is the concern over trash and things like that not getting picked up, and that's something that I hear a lot, and I'll get people calling me and saying, "Hey, and y'all are great, but I have to end up being the conduit for that." Is there any way that you all can put up at the bus stops? If you have any issues with cleanliness or safety, call Lynx directly?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, like I say, I don't mind fielding them if I have to, but the problem is by the time it gets to me, and then I send it over to Jeff and everything like that, it seems kind of circuitous. If they could just contact you all directly?
Yes, ma'am. We need to do a better job at that. Now, what you will notice in the rear of the bus stop lane, it does have our telephone number on the back, but, you know, we probably need to do a better job of explaining why you could call that number.
It's on the back of the bus stop?
Yes, ma'am. It's 407-841-LYNX.
Yeah, I think it needs to be a little more prominent location.
Yes, ma'am.
But like I say, I mean, I support the bus stop, but that's the, you know, that's kind of the blowback I'm getting from businesses is we don't want the bus stops because we don't want to have to pick up trash. And I'm like, well, you know, if we can get away to where we're picking up the trash more efficiently, and we're not creating a public nuisance, but we're only doing public benefit, I think it'll be easier for me to work with businesses to get more stops, because I support you.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know, that's been my impediment to getting stops put in, is this concern.
Well, this has been, this is a challenge throughout our country when it comes to trash at bus stops. So one thought process that's in place now is maybe minimizing the number of stops that have trash receptacles at them, and the reason being is that most of the people who are using those trash receptacles are not necessarily the people who are utilizing the service, but it's the people that are walking by. Oftentimes, when we go out to clean the receptacles, we're finding a number of items that simply would not be necessarily used by our customers.
Well, if we don't do trash cans, we're going to have more trash in the road. So it might not be your problem then, but then it still becomes our issue. But again, that, you know, I'm sharing that concern with you from what I've heard from businesses, and it's up to y'all what you want to do, but I think we do need to have places to put trash that doesn't end up in our storm system.
Yes, sir.
I think we all need to work together on that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else good? Okay, Edward, thank you for the update.
Thank you so very much.
All right, that will conclude our workshop for today.